I'd like to call the order, the Springville Board of Education meeting for October 26, 2022. Roll call, please.
Thad, yes, Stukey, Palajay?
Yes.
Yes.
Stand for the questions.
All right. I, please, I, others?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle of all with liberty and justice for all.
Are you, others? I, basically, for, pardon me.
One point two, adoption of tonight's agenda, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Thad, yes, Stukey, Palajay?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
One point three is approval of September 28, 2022, meeting minutes, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Thad, yes, Stukey, Palajay?
Yes.
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 One point four is approval of the October 12, 2022, meeting minutes, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Yep. Roll.
Thad, yes, Stukey, Palajay?
Yes.
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 Public participation, two point one, ROTC. Scott's going to take care of it.
Board President members of the board, presenting here tonight is Lieutenant Colonel Todd Barrier and Sophia Roush. Sophia is a cadet, JRTC, Springville High School. They're going to speak about Sophia's recent Flight Academy scholarship this summer. Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Todd Barrier, and with me is Cadet Sophia Roush. She is one of the cadets in the junior ROTC program here at Springville High School. Tonight, what we're going to do is going to talk to you a little bit about this Chief of Staff of the Air Force Flight Scholarship Program that's been going on for quite a few years, about six years now, and Sophia is the latest graduate of that academy. She went to the academy this summer, so I'm going to brief you a little bit on just the basics of the program, and then halfway through, she'll come in, and she's going to share a bunch of pictures of what she did while she was there, and she'll also give you a rundown on kind of like what it was like to be in the day in the life of an aviation cadet. Here's the overview, you're going to talk a little bit about the purpose and the description of the program, how the application process works. It's a pretty extensive application process, a pretty stringent, very competitive process. Talk a little bit about this year, 2022, 2020 to '23, how the process is going to work, what it's going to look like from an Air Force perspective. I've got a list of a couple past graduates, you may recognize some of the names, we've had two other past graduates, and then Sophia, she'll get a chance to talk to you about what she did and all the great things that she did over the summer. All right, let's talk a little bit about the purpose of the program. There are a few purposes behind the program. One of them is to inspire young students to also provide a pathway to aviation careers. So the Air Force and the other military branches are very big on trying to get young folks to come into their service. For those that are interested in aviation, this is a pathway to an aviation career. It also capitalizes on the diverse JRTC cadet populations. JRTC across the United States, there's about 800 high schools that have Air Force Junior ROTC program, and they are very proud of the fact that it's a pretty diverse population, 43% female and 57% minority, so the Air Force likes to tap into that diverse population for a lot of their programs. And it also addresses probably one of the most important factors is that this Chief of Staff of the Air Force Flight Scholarship Program, it addresses a national need, it addresses the national pilot shortage on the civilian industry and in the military. For those of you that may be keeping up with those kinds of things in the news, there is a pilot shortage in the United States, very much so on the civilian side and definitely on the military side. There are some studies, military studies, Boeing has also done a study, they estimate that they need about 6,000 to 8,000 pilots a year for the next 20, 20 years to sustain the force, the fleet in the military, and then the civilian fleet as well. So this is just one initiative that the Air Force is doing to try to get those young folks to be interested in the aviation community. Now, who can apply? We have sophomores, juniors, and seniors that are allowed to apply for the program. However, depending on what grade you're in, you've got to be 17 years old by July 31 of 2023. Every summer, you've got to be 17 by the end of July. Why is that? Well, the Federal Aviation Administration can't issue a license to an individual unless you're 17 years old, so it doesn't make any sense to send a freshman who's 14 or 15 because they can't get a license, so that's one of the caveats associated with the program. And it's a sad marker, because believe me, we have kids who miss that cut by a week, two days, a month, and they try to ask headquarters for waivers, and it just doesn't, it doesn't happen, so they unfortunately just have to wait another year to apply for the program. What are some of the eligibility requirements for the program? You've got to have a 3.0 grade point average overall. The cadets take an aptitude test that I administered to them, it is an Air Force-built aptitude test. It's similar to an ACT SAT, but it's a little bit smaller, not as long, it only takes about 45 minutes. It also has some questions about aviation knowledge, so if some of these kids are already studying some aviation stuff, they will do much better on this test. They have an Air Force ROTC fitness score, this is something that every cadet does in the Cadet Corps nationwide, and you could compare it to some of us, if you remember when we were young, we did the Presidential Fitness Test in high school or in junior high and elementary school. It's very similar to that, however, they do a mile run, push-ups and sit-ups, and then those scores go into a gonkulator that the Air Force has built, and it comes out with a percentage, and cadets have to be in the 50th percentile and above to be qualified to apply for the scholarship. And then lastly, there's an endorsement from a school administrator, potentially their guidance council or one of the principals, and myself, we provide them an endorsement as well. And after they compete nationwide, if they are selected, they must pass at some point before they go, they've got to pass a Federal Aviation Administration Class 1 Flight Physical, which is basic physical, but it has a little bit more detail on your eyes, depth perception, color blindness, and things like that, and making sure that if you're up in an airplane by yourself, that you're safe, and you're not going to harm anybody or yourself. Now, for this year, 2022, '23, these are some of the unique attributes of the program, it changes every year, sometimes depending on the amount of money that the Air Force has, depends a lot on what they do. This year, it's very robust, this is the greatest number of scholarships they're going to give out, they're going to give out 300 scholarships this year for junior ROTC cadets who qualify, and they are going to be able to attend a private or a public university, and they will be able to get their private pilot's license, and that's the goal of the scholarship, is to bring these kids to a university over the summer for eight weeks, they go through a very intense program, ground school and air training, and the goal is to get them to a point where they can test and certify and achieve their private pilot's license at the end of that course. Now, one of the things that the Air Force has run into is weather, weather is not always cooperative, these kids are flying in little Cessna airplanes, and you have to have VFR, Visual Flight Rules, to fly, so rain and bad weather does wreak havoc on some of this, and some of the kids do not get to the point of getting their license, so what they do is they just go back home to wherever they came from, and they can continue that training to complete their, to complete their license. So there are kids who complete the program and get their license, and there are kids who complete the program and do not, so it doesn't matter, it doesn't make a difference whether they do or not, they are still a graduate of the Flight Academy Training Program. It's an eight-week program, and the scholarship is worth $22,500, which is pretty robust in today's day and age, and the nice thing about it, or one of the benefits that the military offers, is there's no military commitment for this, so these kids don't have any obligation to anybody if they do this training and get this, get this thing completed. Here are a couple of our past graduates. On the left there, this is Sadie Schindler, she was the first one to go from Springville High School in the very first year that they had the program, which is back in 2018. She ended up going to Liberty University, which is down in Lynchburg, Virginia, and at the same time, at that same year, Caleb Pretty, he was an alternate, however, he didn't, he didn't get to go, but Sadie was our very first person to do the, to do the program. In the middle there is Megan Simons, she did it in 2021, she went to Florida Memorial University, and she is now an Air Force ROTC College Cadet up at the University of Colorado Bowl, and she got an Air Force ROTC scholarship. So if you go through this program in high school, you get a little flag by your name, and if you apply for some ROTC scholarships or some military scholarships, that will light up in the system, and the Air Force is more inclined to invest in you because you went through this program. And then lastly here, Sophia Roush, who is with us today, she was a 2022 graduate, she went to Elizabeth City State University, and she will be able to tell you all kinds of things, all the great things that she did. But before she comes up and does that, does anybody have any questions about, about anything, the program?
Just curious, for the, do you know what the percentage is for the students that go through the program that actually do go on to pursue the military or being a pilot?
I don't know that offhand, but I suspect it's a pretty large percentage. Do you have, do you have to tell your numbers from your class?
In our class, so we posted 16 cadets, five of which got their licenses out of Elizabeth City, then, or six, five of which did, and then we have six more continuing flight training back home, but as far as the national statistics, I'm pretty sure it was 2018 they measured, it was about a 75% rate, so they had cadets who either got their license at the university or went home and made it, so that was the first year of the program, continues on today.
Do you know how many actually go into the military, like even beyond the licensure? I'm just curious, I mean, clearly it's something that's got to be working because they're keeping the program.
Yeah, I mean, I suspect it's a pretty significant number, but I don't think that I do that. Any other? All right, well, we'll have Sophia come up, and she's got a couple slides, and she'll be able to tell you all the things that she did this summer.
All right, so, hello.
One more slide.
Hi, so I'm Cadet Sophia Roush, so to start off, this is just, you know, all 16 of us at our graduation, as you know, we're in Elizabeth City State University, our program was eight and a half weeks. Our program also dealt with a bit of the weather, coastal programs like that that you're seeing, there was about, I think, 17 universities this past year, they said, but our usual day started off with about a 7:30 AM call to breakfast, and then off to ground school at 8:00, it was a lot of study, like long days, and a two-hour flight block every single day, and this was Monday through Saturday, so it was quite a studious program. On Sundays, our days off, we got trips down to Kitty Hawk for first flight, and locations like the Military Aviation Museum, so even besides our flight training, it was still a experience, you know, that allowed kids to go into more aviation history. Here, I just have some more photos, so we were on, in a Coast Guard base right there, so we got to see some cool aircraft flying, that's an F-18 right there. One day, we had two of them flying, I was flying on final, and they right on mine, so quite a few cool experiences there, a night flight, and then former cross countries from the Cessna 172. Another photo of us, and, you know, my plane was an 878 Fort Tango, so had to throw it in there, we all got designated little planes. That was actually a photo of our university right off to the side of the airport that I got to take, and on my first local solo, you're right there, you see the Outer Banks, so if any of you guys have been there, it is absolutely gorgeous, and you more gorgeous from here. Questions? It was really, the program itself was pretty busy, it was all wonderful people, and we had cadets, the majority of them wanted to apply for the military, but it's also, it helps the commercial aviation industries, we have quite a few that want to apply commercial, so for success rate, I'd say this program's been pretty well for that pilot shortage that we're all facing. Do we have any questions?
What are your plans for the future?
My plans, so I'm one of the ones that plans on, or one of the ones that plans on flying for the military, I plan on applying for a pilot slot in Air Force Senior ROTC. We actually had a senior ROTC cadet at our program, we had, out of the 20 Navy cadets that applied or were sent to this program, we had four, we had cadets from Civil Air Patrol and mostly AFDC, but, and for a degree program, Air Force, Aerospace Engineering, so I do plan on flying, hopefully flying throughout for the rest of my life, whether as, or whether after the military, going commercial or just being a C-5 back home, so, certified flight instructor.
If anybody was curious, there are 24 universities that are participating in this program this year, closest one to here is Bowling Green State University, they have an aviation program, they are part of the program this summer. Another close one is Purdue University, and I think the next closest one that's up here in this area is Indiana Westland, and then there are various universities across the United States as far as down to Arizona, Emory-Riddle, Florida, Emory-Riddle, Arizona, up on the East Coast, and the cadets, they kind of get to, when they, they get selected, they get to kind of pick a wish list of where they'd like to go, and then the Air Force kind of figures it out and assigns them based on, I don't know, I don't really know what the criteria is, maybe it's proximity, or whatever the cheapest way to get them there. Unless anybody has any other questions.
I just want to say, you're impressive, you're going to do great things in life, it's exciting to see a female also out there wanting to be a pilot, and you just clearly have a direction, a vision, so good luck to you.
I do want to say that's another thing, I mean, when I first heard about the program, it was Sadie Schindler, and I mean, you know, we're both kind of short little brother girl, you know, I saw myself in her, so I'm hoping that with this program, you know, I can maybe do that for other younger cadets, so that's why I think that this program is a great opportunity for young, I guess, kids wanting to go into aviation.
Thank you.
We'll get a photo if y'all want it, yeah. Come to, go on your door usually. Okay, slide down. All right, we're good, thank you. Good job, Colonel. Two point two, don't, is there anybody from Springville Education Association? Anything to say?
No.
Okay. Classified, anybody from classified? Have no prearranged, right? Public participation on any agenda item? Good. Work session. During the work session, if public has a question after each of the items, you may ask that question at that time, we'll try to get you an answer. So I guess we're at, your report card presentation, Ms. Cook? I'm not going to name all the people.
That's okay.
I'd listen there.
Got it.
Just to point out.
Good. Good job, Ms. Cook.
Good job, Colonel. I think they're gone. Yeah. All right, where were we at? Two point two, don't, is there anybody from Springville Education Association? Anything to say?
No.
Okay. Classified, anybody from classified? Have no prearranged, right? Public participation on any agenda item? Good. Come on. Work session. During the work session, if public has a question after each of the items, you may ask that question at that time, we'll try to get you an answer. So I guess we're at, your report card presentation, Ms. Cook? I'm not going to name all the people.
That's okay.
I'd listen there.
Got it.
Just to point out. I'd like to announce.
Good. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, we are pleased to be here tonight, have your attention, to bring you some very, very good news. So we're always happy when we can bring good news, and it's been three years since we've been able to do a report card update for you due to COVID, and the state, ODEE, not having a full report card for us to share. First thing I want to say about the report card before I introduce our team is that the report card has input from everybody in the district, from our bus driver, who is the first smile that our students see on the bus, to our food service, who keeps food in the belly so the kids can keep them alert, to our custodians, who make sure that the classrooms are clean and an inviting environment, as well as our teachers, administrators, and all staff, so this report card report goes out to all of those people within the district. I do have our curriculum instruction team with me tonight, and each will be giving you a report on a different section. Liz Gruber is our literacy coordinator, Beth Poultrie is our secondary coordinator, and Tracy Griffin is our elementary coordinator, and we're all thrilled to be here tonight with you. We have some squirrels for you tonight, and we would like you to inspect these squirrels, and just hold up a finger to let us know which squirrel you feel like right now, before we get started.
We need to know what we're feeling.
That's right.
Is that one of the pumpkin ones?
Yeah, number three.
Number three?
Four.
Four, five, five.
Five.
Five is the most popular squirrel. All right. Keep in mind your squirrels, we're a unit of squirrels. The report card looks different, we've never seen a report card like this in past years, the state has changed from an A, B, C, D rating to a star rating, so you can see each of these components has a number of stars highlighted, and there are six components total, however, there are only five that are being counted within our report card this year. So our college, career, workforce, and military readiness is very important, but the state is not utilizing that for the culmination of the report card stars this year, however, you will see that next year with stars. Hopefully five. The most stars you can get on any one of the components is five, and you can see on our report card that we have five stars in achievement, progress, gap closing, graduation, and four stars of early literacy. We are very, very proud of this district report card. Just for perspective, I put our neighbors up, so these are our districts in Warren County that we often compare ourselves to, and as you can see, we earned 24 total stars, we're the only district in Warren County earning 24 stars, so there's range anywhere from 14 to the 24 that we earned. We hope that next year, this time, we can tell you that we earn 25. For perspective, in the state, so outside of Warren County, there were 12 districts overall in Ohio that earned 25 stars. There were only three south of Columbus, and those are Loveland, Madera, and Simmmore. And there were a total of 19 who earned 24 stars, and this is out of 607 districts. Our neighbor, south of Columbus, who also earned 24 stars, were Belrock, Sugar Creek, Merrimott, Wyoming, and Oakwood. So I feel like we're in very good company with those 24 and 25-star schools. Again, kudos go out to everybody who contributed. Those five components weighed and looked a little bit different than the last time we reported to you, in that achievement and progress used to be 20% weight, and the others were 15% weight. So you can see that achievement and progress have jumped up to 28.6, and graduation, early literacy, and gap closing are all sharing 14.266 each. So not all stars are worth the same, so you're going to hear a little bit about all five of these coming up, but we just wanted to make sure that you understand that some are weighted more heavily than others. And this time, Beth is going to tell you a little bit about the achievement.
Okay. All right, so this chart, you're going to see several times this evening, okay? So you can tell there's a lot of information on it, but all you have to do is concentrate on the road that the arrow is on, okay? So I'm going to be talking about achievement, so how did our students achieve this year? And if you look, okay, you see you have your different components to the left, all right? So besides achievement, we're going to be talking about progress, we're going to be talking about gap closing, early literacy, and graduation, okay? And then at the top, you have your different star ratings, and then in each of the boxes, you have the percentage of schools that ranked within that star rating, and then they convert it to how many schools that equates to. So if you look, as you remember what Andrea said, we got five stars as far as achievement is concerned, so we had, we were with 15.2% of the districts within the state, if we convert that to how many schools, that was 91 other schools, 92 total. So as you can tell, we did very, very well. The majority of the districts kind of fell between the three and the four-star category as far as achievement, so we did above and beyond. Okay, we'll explain what that means. So we are going to look at, we're going to look at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, so we'll take the elementary first. Elementary, we have third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, each of those grades took the ELA test and took the math test, so you can kind of see how they did, okay, their percentages are over to the side. Side, if you notice, fifth grade also has science, okay? So fifth grade, this is the first year these students actually take the science test, all right? So this score has gone up considerably, because last year, we allotted time for science, which wasn't necessarily happening in the past, and then Tracy Griffin has also worked with the teachers to adopt a new inquiry-based curriculum, so we are only going to see, hopefully, those scores go even higher, so we're excited about that.
Can I ask you a question, what you mean for something? When you said you allotted time for science, what do you mean by that?
Okay, so we carved out time, so sections of time, when the teachers would actually teach science.
Oh, that hasn't been, what was it before?
Before, it was kind of, it was, you know, they may have done different periods, different days, you know, some teachers were probably more comfortable teaching science than others, so those teachers that were more comfortable probably, you know, incorporated it quite a bit more than what other teachers did. So we are trying to give teachers the materials and the resources and the supplementals that they need to be comfortable teaching science, so.
One more question, just a second. These tests are probably, it was taken last?
Last spring, last spring, so you kind of have to, yeah, kind of go back to last year.
Yeah. They did not take them the year before because of COVID?
We did not take them in '20, we did take them in '21, but many schools in the state were not in session all year, we had anywhere between 15 to 20% of our students doing a Model B program, so the state didn't have enough students able to take the test, thus not creating a full report card for us, so everything came in last year as not rated, even though the students took the test.
Did we have any, like, comparison points, I was curious, like?
Well, the biggest one is that science came up 10 points. That's our largest game, we're pretty proud of that.
Concerned about the chaotic the last couple of years, what did you say?
Each of those grades took the ELA test and took the math test. So you can kind of see how they did, okay? Their percentages are over to the side. Side, if you notice, fifth grade also has science. Okay, so fifth grade, this is the first year these students actually take the science test, all right? So this score has gone up considerably because last year we allotted time for science, which wasn't necessarily happening in the past. And then Tracy Griffin has also worked with the teachers to adopt a new inquiry-based curriculum. So we are only going to see, hopefully, those scores go even higher. So we're excited about that.
Can I ask you a question? What do you mean by something? When you said you allotted time for science, what do you mean by that?
Okay, so we carved out time, so sections of time, when the teachers would actually teach science.
Oh, that hasn't been, what was it before?
Before, it was kind of, it was, you know, they may have done different periods, different days. You know, some teachers were probably more comfortable teaching science than others. So those teachers that were more comfortable probably, you know, incorporated it quite a bit more than what other teachers did. So we are trying to give teachers the materials and the resources and the supplementals that they need to be comfortable teaching science. So.
One more question, just sorry. These tests are probably, it was taken last?
Last spring, last spring. So you kind of have to, yeah, kind of go back to last year.
Yeah. They did not take them the year before because of COVID?
We did not take them in '20. We did take them in '21, but many schools in the state were not in session all year. We had anywhere between 15 to 20% of our students doing a Model B program. So the state didn't have enough students able to take the test, thus not creating a full report card for us. So everything came in last year as not rated, even though the students took the test.
Do we have any comparison points, just curiously?
Well, the biggest one is that science came up 10 points. That's our largest game.
I'm concerned about the chaos in the last couple of years. I'm just curious of how these are compared to where we were prior. Have you seen a huge drop off or things have improved? That's what I'm just wondering.
All right, so as far as middle school is concerned, we have sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. Again, we've seen that all of those grades take ELA and the math OST. And then in eighth grade, students take the science OST, okay? Now you'll notice that this number, when we're talking about how we've done in the past, the science has gone up considerably as well there. And a large part of that is probably because we have implemented and integrated seven, eight science classes for seventh graders. So I'll talk about, a little more about that here in a few minutes. If you can go ahead and look at those scores. And then we have high school, okay? So Algebra I, US Government, US History, Biology, ELA II, and Geometry, okay? So you can go ahead and look at and see how we did, did very well in those areas. Algebra I and ELA II are the tests that the students need to pass in order to graduate.
What is passing?
684 for those two tests. Typically, 700 is a passing level, but they can drop to a 684 and be able to be graduation eligible with a 684.
What does 684 mean? I'm sorry, I just don't.
These numbers are indicative of the number of kids who passed the test. So the test pass rate is 700, but it drops to a 684 is acceptable for graduation.
And that's out of how many? Like 700, is it points out of like 900 points or something?
It goes up into the 800s.
Into the 800s, okay.
Each test is a little bit different, but they go into the 800s.
Got it, okay.
We don't see a lot in the 800s. Technically, our high scores are in the upper sevens.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Another part of the achievement component is the performance index, okay? So the performance index measures the test results of every student, not just those who scored admission or higher, okay? So this, the performance index actually is determined by the average of the highest 2% performance index scores in the state, okay? So I'll go into a little bit more detail in just a second about how we came up with this number, what we scored as far as performance index is concerned, at 91.5%. So we got 98.1 of a possible 107, or 107.3 points. All right, now here's kind of how it's broken down. So you have your different levels, okay, of how students pass. So you've got limited all the way up to advanced are the levels that the students can get on the OST. And then what happens is depending on how those, the percentages that students do, then you get a certain point amount for that level where they score. Now, what happens is if we have accelerated students, accelerated students are students who are in a certain grade level, but they may be taking the curriculum in a higher grade level or even two higher grade levels, then their level is automatically bumped up. So take, for example, that seven, eight integrated science that I was talking about. Those are seventh graders taking an eighth grade OST. If they score in the advanced portion or on the advanced level, they actually get raised to the advanced plus. So that gives a section of points accomplished if they scored the accomplished level. Then they get the points for the advanced, okay? So when we talk about accelerated classes, our compact four, five class, our pre-algebra class, our integrated science class, our seventh grade algebra class, our eighth grade geometry class, that's what's happening in all of those areas. So when they score, they actually get bumped up to a higher level. And so then that's how we get this amount of points.
Can I ask a question around, you mentioned algebra and geometry, and those were the percentages that were lower. If a seventh grader is, or an eighth grader is taking it, is, I'm just curious why those were, like the other ones were pretty much in the 80s up to 90 and those were both a bit lower? Does that, is there correlation to it's including our junior high kids taking it? Or what is your thought around why those are lower?
Well, and that's what we're looking at to see why those are lower. And it does include, it does include the junior high. So yes, it does include those points. So we're looking to see what's causing that and we're trying to remedy that, okay?
Those discrepancies you'll see on the building report cards. So you'll see lower scores at the high school level in algebra and geometry than you will at the junior high level. So those, those will look different on the two different building report cards. One last thing I just wanted to bring up on Beth's achievement. This proficient is the, is the 700 line. So anybody who gets a 700 or above is living here and above. That 684 that's acceptable falls down here in basic, okay?
Thank you.
I want to give you, I don't want to give you more information than you want to hear.
That's okay.
Just trying to kind of bounce off of your questions. Here's that slide again. So here we are in progress. 16.5% of districts in Ohio ended in five stars in progress. Progress is my favorite part of the report card. They're all important. They all have meaning. The progress shows us how far a child has moved from day one to day 180 in the school year. So this is the one that shows us, if we had that youngster that was sitting back here in limited and she moved into basic, she made progress and we're proud of that progress. She doesn't need to jump out of limited up to advanced for us to be happy about that. We want to show that she is gaining a full year's progress. So as you can see here, I have the grades four through eight. You may be thinking, why isn't third grade there? Progress is measured by one year's growth. You may also know the term value added. Value added scores just came out for our teachers and they've been diving into those over the last week. Grades four through eight are indicative of one year's progress. So our first year that we take a test is in third grade. It takes a whole year to show progress. So that's why we start this chart in fourth grade instead of third. Third is kind of our benchmark. What did they get in third? Did they make a year's progress, yes or no? So you can see here, again, the state has changed the colors. So the colors look different for us. These are all of our grades through eight. And you can see that we don't have any data in these light gray. Beth had told you that we do science in grades eight and we do science in grades five. Grade five, I want to point out, because we have a red block in science. So our students made less progress than expected. However, we made a 10-point gain in achievement, which is the highest achievement gain that we had this year. So we had this big leap in the amount of kids who passed the science test, but we're still not where we want to be as far as the progress, as far as the one year's growth. So we have work to do in science five, which we're aware of, and we, thanks to you, have the materials to do that and the team to assist our teachers in implementing that. And we do need a little bit of work in fifth and sixth grade English Language Arts. We have had some staffing changes in sixth grade Language Arts. That department flipped over by 50%. So the two teachers that were in sixth grade this year are in different particular positions. One's in a social studies position and the other's in a tech position. So we'll probably see some change there in sixth grade. Fifth grade, we're working on those language art skills. And with Liz on board and literacy and Tracy on board in elementary, we expect these red blocks to go away, no more red. So we're hoping with our fingers crossed that we see the progress that we would like to see in fifth and sixth. And as I move into high school, these are called EOC or End of Course Tests. So they have a little bit of a different name. The third through eight are called ESTs or Ohio State Tests. These are called End of Course Tests. Again, we've got these light gray colors that do not count. This is a whole different curriculum than what we follow, this math one and two. We tested English two, algebra, geometry, biology, American history, and American government. And as you can see, we did very well in all of those. We do have a little bit of work. We're showing moderate evidence of more progress than expected in algebra. However, we're not getting the amount of students passing that test that we would like to see. So while we're making progress with our youngsters, they're making more than one year's growth. We need to make even more growth with them to bring that up. Have I confused anybody yet on progress? Any questions on progress just yet?
I just have one question on science. So when did, when did our new curriculum, when did we?
Well, it started in August of this year. However, Tracy had teachers doing pilots last year. So there was a smattering of that science curriculum going on last year as we were doing pilots. So we had the Amplify curriculum in classrooms and we also had other curriculums from other companies in classrooms. So there was a lot of science happening last year as we were making decisions on what to purchase.
But the overall, like here when I see like fifth grade red, that was not fully implemented in the curriculum yet?
No, 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 no. This is our first full year with all children in grades one through five doing science every day for a specified block of time.
And what about curriculum? Like I see with five, six, both ELA and red. Are we at new curriculum there? I just don't remember where.
We're not.
So that's where you think staff changes potentially of, like, okay.
Might have an effect, yes.
Thank you.
All right, here we go into the gap closing. Tracy's on. All right, so we revisit this chart, as you can see the components again off to the side. We are now on gap closing where the blue bar is located. And Springbrough was one of 293 schools that fell into the five-star rating. So we are at 48.3%. So we're in good company as far as closing the gap for all of our different subgroups. So we're really proud of that. Okay, so when you look at gap closing, we know that this gap closing component measures the reduction in educational gaps for our student subgroups. And when we think about gap closing, we're going to be looking at six different measures when we look at this component. So academic achievement and progress, which is what Beth and Andrea just talked about, for math and ELA. We're also going to look at graduate, graduation goals and chronic absenteeism as well as English Language Arts learners and proficiency for improving that area. And the gifted performance indicator, which has three measures that make up that element. The identification of gifted students, progress, and resource for those students. So of those six measures, those measures have points assigned to them, anywhere from five to 10 points for those, those measures. Springbrough received a five-star rating because we exceeded that threshold that the state had allowed for the 60% percentage. So we received the five stars because of that. So we're going to take a look at each of the different measures that make up gap closing. And the first measure relates to our English Language Arts and math tested areas. As you can see, you've got bars and dots. Those dots are the goals that are set for each subgroup based upon Ohio's Every Student Succeed Act plan. And then the bars are the performance for each of those subgroup areas. So when you look, as Beth previously talked about achievement, we are making great gains with our different subgroups as far as achievement. When we look at our subgroups, we're far exceeding the goals for each of the different areas. So in our minds, we are being equitable with our intention to each of those different subgroups as we are far exceeding the goals that are set by the state. When we take a look at growth, growth, we've got some work to do as Beth, or as Andrea had mentioned. When we look at our growth, it now changes the goal line, is now a line versus a red dot. And you can see that the performance index is a measure of two. So we have some work to do in, in the growth area. So we're doing really well in achievement, but value added and growth is an area that we need to work upon because not only do we want our kids to achieve, but we want them to make a year's worth of growth as well. So this is an area of focus. In a recent message that our state interim superintendent just released just the other day as all this data was coming out with Ohio, she made a comment that data is only valuable if we use it by harnessing lessons learned and introducing actionable takeaways that truly impact instructional supports and learning. So when we, this year, introduced our math growth assessment, we are very excited about the data we're getting out of that because we're hopeful that the data we're seeing and that the teachers are talking about, they're going to implement that data right now and hopefully we'll see a growth impact in math and ELA with using that instructional data to make informed, or, excuse me, informed decisions about what we're doing in the classroom with our students. So we're excited about that growth data.
Can I just ask another quick question?
Yeah.
When you talk about the teachers using that data, so you're saying you're getting it right away. So the whole is you're catching those students that are lower and they're giving additional instruction to those students to get them up to where we want them to be.
And not just students who may be performing, you know, in areas of struggle, but students who are maybe need enrichment. We can look at those, that data and decide what are they ready to learn. We really felt it was super important to meet with our teachers, to have those data meetings, to talk about this data because if you don't use it, you lose it. And we want to make sure that it's making an impact in the classroom. So when we looked at the data, we talked about a learning continuum and where these, the students are falling, falling and what skill sets they are ready to learn. So we're using that information for small group instruction in math and ELA. So our hope is we're going to see an impact in growth with this data from our growth assessments this year.
So did we allow, like, do the teachers have time to have these data meetings? Or how are these happening? Because I see it's a critical piece. I'm just curious how we've supported that as a district to make sure.
Yep, we are meeting with teachers. We are having data meetings and having really time to look at that data. In our most recent PD, we did offer a math lab so that teachers could come in, dive into the data, ask us questions, allow us to help them with all the different reports that are provided in math. It was just, it was a great opportunity. I mean, I think Liz and I spent about three weeks with our K-5 teachers to really look at the data and make some instructional decisions based upon it.
And I'm working with the six through eight teachers to inform them, you know, about what pieces they can use. And then the principals are going to give them some time to have like a half a day to kind of go through that information and decide where they're going to go with it because by that time they'll have growth measures to judge and to work with.
That's great. And I guess that's where my head was, why, I mean, this is amazing, amazing data, especially if we're getting it in real time. But I just wouldn't want them to feel like, well, that's going to take every evening and weekend to do that. So I'm glad that there's some things that we've got supporting their regular teaching day.
We want them feeling confident, parent teacher conferences about what this data is and what it's all about. And we've offered many resources to help them, to help lead and guide them for when those parent teacher conferences come up because we want to make sure, you know, they feel secure going in, talking about the data and what it's saying for their child.
You got excited.
I did get excited. All right, so next up is graduation. And as you can see here, we do not have all of our subgroups represented for the graduation rate. But as you can see, we've already got the red dot, which is our state goal for each of the different subgroups that we do have representation in. And we have increased or exceeded the goal in each of those areas. This year, we added the economically disadvantaged subgroup to our graduation rate.
Why do we not have the other subgroups?
We do not have more than 15 students that make up that subgroup to be accounted for for the gap closing for graduation. All right. Now, chronic absence and English language learners are our fourth and fifth component for gap closing. The state goal for chronic absenteeism is a 22.1%. And we are falling right at that 8.6%. And we are falling right at that eight point six percent. So falling much lower than that state goal, which is great. So we're doing a really good job with addressing absenteeism. However, this area on the report card is only a report only this year. So next year, it will count as a part of the gap closing component. For English language learners, we are not measured in this area because we don't, again, have more than fifteen students to account for this area for gap closing. And last but not least, we have our gifted area. Now, the gifted performance indicator is composed of three different measures. And depending upon what is within that measure depends on how many points that are allotted. There's five points for each of the different measures, but depending upon where we fell within that measure depends on if we met that component of gifted. So in order to get the value added rating for the gifted performance, we had to obtain a three star or better rating, and which we did, getting a four star rating. For performance index, we scored a hundred and fifteen points out of one-twenty. So we were able to meet that expectation, meaning the ninety-five percent threshold that the state has as set as a goal. As far as total for gifted identification services met, we did not meet this performance threshold. We did just below the sixty percent threshold for this area. And we truly believe it was, I think it's a hundred and forty points. So we got a hundred, we got eighty-one out of a hundred and forty points for this area. Now, we have students who are identified and gifted, but may not be meeting that service requirement. As we look to our high school students, we have many students who have that ability or achievement ID, but may not be meeting that service requirement because we encourage our students to not take full AP courses as we don't want to impact their mental health.
So if you have a superior code, when do you get credit for them being identified? Like, do they have to take CP or AP or?
They can do CP, AP, or honors to get credit for those areas. But we encourage them to look to an area of focus versus taking all AP classes. You know, those kids already put enough pressure upon themselves to achieve and to perform. And so we encourage them to maybe strive or take the path of an area of focus and maybe not for science or English language arts pathway. So that they are not, you know, overexerting themselves and causing that much stress upon themselves as they're working, you know, in their high school courses. So that, in reflecting on that area, we think that might be, you know, why they're ID, but may not be taking that full course to get the service requirement.
So is this something we're striving to do or are we striving to stay here because we feel like it's a better balance? Or like, are you trying to get to that, that point and just trying to understand what our goal is?
We would like to get to meeting this goal. However, the mental health of our students far exceeds, right? But, you know, we certainly would like to meet every goal measure that the state is requiring of us. But we also think that the mental health of our students is an important factor that we need to consider. So, you know, not achieving, you know, and again, that's just one area we're trying to think of why we didn't get that full extent of points. But we can dive deeper and then look where else we might begin to pack.
Is this for students identified in anything, like in a math, oh, lady? Or if they're not a superior code, they identify with some, they're still in this number for that subject?
Yes. All right, I'll pass it over to Liz, who just kind of talked about early literacy.
All right, you still with me? I know, but that's a lot of information. And I'm here to talk about early literacy and I could talk about it all day, I won't. But I know you've already covered a lot of information, but I do want to give you, obviously, I'm the only person standing up here talking about four stars and not five stars. So I want to make sure that you understand where we are already going and where we want to go in the future so we can achieve that five star in early literacy also. So again, like you already know, we receive a four star rating in early literacy. But if you look, barely anybody got five stars. So we are in the top twenty-three percent of the state that got four to top four or five stars. Most of the state, seventy-seven percent, either got one, two, or three stars. So again, something that we can at least be proud of for that. But, you know, I don't think any of us want to stay there. So four stars actually means that we've exceeded the states of Ohio's standards in literacy. So again, we can celebrate that, but also, you know, when you and I look at this, and I know our team has talked about this, when we look at this, it kind of feels like the state has some pretty low state thirds. If four stars, as you can see, seventy-seven point nine percent of our students last year were proficient or above in third grade on the OST. And none of us think that's good enough. And I'm sure you don't either. So that's kind of the bad news, right? Is that, yes, while we got four stars and they say we exceeded it, but we still have work to do. But I do have good news for you and that's what I want to leave you with. So the first part of our good news is that even before these report cards were coming out last year, we, we've already been putting some things in place to try to strengthen our literacy program here. First one being in core instruction. We've added a phoneme awareness curriculum to our every K-2 classroom. And I'm actually meeting with preschool next week and we're going to be adding it to the pre-K programs also so that we can really start working on those foundational skills as before students are even in kindergarten. So that's a big piece. We spent last year updating all of our K-3 ELA pacing guide, which is basically like the roadmap for teachers and what we need to teach. And we did that because we wanted to include more emphasis on those foundational reading skills and especially including explicit instruction in phonics, which is something that we kind of didn't really have in the past. So we already added those two things. Like Tracy mentioned, we brought math in this year as a growth measure. It gives us so much information that we didn't have before. Most importantly, that trend data across time on specific students so that we're not looking back at last year's test results and trying to make decisions. We're looking at real time, real time data to make decisions right now for students, but also for us to look overall and over years and think, if we only have seventy-eight percent of our students proficient in reading, maybe we need to make some tweaks in tier one. So we have to look at those types of things. It gives us information that is both in the classroom, but also from a more of a global view. So we're excited to use that data. But also, using it this year, we used it to help determine which students, it's a diagnostic for us in K-3. And so it helped us determine which students were struggling with reading, which then gave us an idea we could dig deeper. So the students that we knew on math came back and they were struggling readers. Then we dug a little bit deeper into the phoneme awareness, into their phonics skills so we could really, really target their skill deficits so that we can intervene correctly. Because if we're giving everybody the same intervention and they don't have the same deficit, not really solving any problems. So now with a big piece too, was adding, was adding some more of those second layer assessments to try to help us be better at supporting our students who are struggling readers. In addition to that, we had thirty-plus teachers trained in Orton Gillingham last year, last summer. And that is an instructional practice that really focuses on phoneme awareness and phonics and those skill deficits for students who are showing that. So we're really excited that at this point this year, because many of our reading teachers and our intervention specialists were also trained along with classroom teachers, that using all of those assessments I talked about, we've been able to identify the students who are really struggling in those two specific foundation skills areas. And I'm happy and proud to say that they are all, all those students that were identified are currently receiving structured literacy instruction through Orton Gillingham. And it's been really exciting and teachers are already seeing growth in those students. So very excited about that. We're not there yet, but we are definitely on our way. And I think the second thing that we have that's great news, and you already know this as well, and Andrea's mentioned it and Tracy mentioned it, Beth, we just have amazing teachers. And when you go to them and say, hey, we need to make some shifts and this is why, for the most part, they're like, okay, let's do it because I want to do what's best for kids and I want all my kids to grow. And so the fact that we put a lot of new things into place this year, both instructionally, assessments, lots of new things to try and make sure that we are doing the best and that we are growing every single student. And so on top of everything else, they have just been wonderful to work with. I'm not that, I haven't been here that long, so I'm pretty new. And I've just found, they're just very, a very great staff to work with, they're awesome teachers. So that's been a huge movement. However, we do have things to think about moving forward. If we want this to get to five stars, we do have something to think about. One of them is because of a lot of the shifts we made, we do need some new instructional materials and resources. Some of the shifts we made, you know, require different types of books for kids to read and text and things like that. So that's something that, you know, we are constantly looking at and kind of this year, did our best to put some things together and in place for teachers, but it's not perfect yet and we still have resources and materials to purchase for that. So that's one thing. And the other thing, as we continue to think forward is, and I mentioned this last year, is thinking about an all-day kindergarten option at some point for, if it's not for everybody, then maybe for some students. You know, the kindergarten curriculum, which is chock full of foundational reading skills and math for that matter, was written to be an all-day curriculum. It's not written for a half day. We are taking a full day curriculum and we are squeezing it into a half day for our kids. And for some kids, that's fine. But for a lot of kids, they do need that, that more time in the curriculum to really continue to progress in those foundational skills so that they're ready to enter first grade. Again, if that's an expense, it's a lot of planning for, but it's just something to keep in our minds as we move forward. You know, when we think about gap closing and we think about early literacy and those types of things.
I have a good question about the kindergarten.
Yeah.
So I noticed on the, on tri-grade level, that first grade diagnostic is lower out of kindergarten, second, third, all have similar.
Yeah.
Do you feel that in all-day kindergarten, like they're scoring higher in kindergarten because of what's being asked, but once they get to first grade, they don't have, is that what that, for being home?
Yes.
Than seeing the drop?
Yes, of course, I'm seeing that too. So what I see, right, what I think happens is we have a lot of kids where we are in, you know, in our, we're in our demography care, we have a lot of kids coming into kindergarten with basic foundation skills, right? They've been read to at home, they have conversations, they have those language skills, they have a lot of those pieces. So they're coming in at that baseline level, right? But we're trying to cram all of these foundational skills into this half day. And it's just not enough time for some kids. And so we see them go from, we had a lot of kids coming in at a baseline level that was, you know, on track. And now we're going into first grade and we're not there. We've lost a lot of kids.
So they're trying to catch up after class?
Correct, and then, yes, yeah. And I do want to mention this too, and I don't have any hard and fast, perfect numbers because the data I'm looking at is from two thousand and fourteen. I know, I'm sure there's something out there that's better, but I, not when you just Google it on there. But from just a very quick glance, I would say that more than ninety percent of the school districts in Ohio have at least an all-day kindergarten option. Not all, I would say ninety percent have all day for everybody. But there's very few districts that are still operating in a, in a all-half day situation. So that is something I think about. Even when I was looking at.
Just how does that option generally work? Does it, like, parents choose, like, an option?
Sometimes it's.
Some sort of identification or?
It can be, there can be lots of options on the table, but one of them can be based on the diagnostic assessment we give in reading at the beginning of the year and then we can invite kids. So that's one option. You can do a lottery sometime, you can charge for all day. I mean, there's lots of different ways to do it. It's just something that I really think, moving forward, we should continue to talk about. And again, oh, I have something.
Sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 let me think. No, if it comes back to me, I'll tell you. Oh, no, I know, so in two thousand, that data from two thousand and fourteen too, I was looking at and just, even on there, just looking at districts around where I live, they were still listed as half day and they're all, they've all gone all day. So like just even from two thousand and fourteen to now, the number of districts that have changed their programming has, is. So, I mean, again, it's not something that can happen overnight, but it's just something, I think, as we move forward to continue to think about.
Can I ask one more question? As I was mentioning, the all-day kindergarten, you mentioned like some other resource, things you have to be looking at. Do you guys have what you need in terms of like funding and support for us? Is it just a matter of sort of evaluating those materials or is it a question of like, you need additional financial support in order to provide those?
I think for this piece specifically, there are things that we need to continue to purchase that we're looking at. It's not an adoption year for an ELA curriculum, but in trying to use the resources that we still have until we are in adoption and adding what we can to supplement it. So there will be kind of purchases like that.
I just want to make sure that there are needs either identifying that we have a chance to sort of give them their importance.
Liz, we're also cognizant of how much our teachers can handle all the months.
Yes.
Fair.
So right now, we have a pile on, we want to step in.
Yeah, that's fair. I just want to make sure, this is so important, this laying that foundation, right, is going to serve.
And everybody in access.
That we're investing appropriately at that early stage. I just want to make sure that it gets a question of like, we don't have the funding for something, that we can have that conversation.
I guess my question to you exactly where your head was with, even if it's not another curriculum, like, do we have enough opportunity for our kids that are struggling to be pulled out? And to get, once you identify, you've had your data meetings, you identify, you know, again, you can differentiate some that are classroom because sometimes a kid might not be on an IP, but they still need a higher level. So I guess that's one of the things that's not a different curriculum, but is it that they do need some additional support in this specific? And I did look at the whole state thing and I saw that this was a lower area for a lot of strong districts.
Yes, I agree.
So, but obviously it's lows, I mean, that's not low, it's lower.
Than we want it to be.
Than we want it to be, yeah. So I was curious about the same thing as you guys are identifying.
What I'll say about that this year, I think with the Orton Gilling, with having so many teachers now training in that and Orton Gillingham, that's made a huge difference this year as far as, as kids receiving the right intervention that they need. And with math and a couple other assessments that we're using, I feel like we did a really good job identifying who needed that intervention. And right now, I feel like, I mean, who's ever going to say, no, we don't need more? But, but I think, I feel like we're at a pretty good place right now. And we're already talking about next year and how can we schedule and structure things to make that process easier. And then the nice part about when we met with the teachers, because I know you asked about this earlier too, to go with the math data. I mean, Tracy and I met with the teachers, a group of like four teachers for a half a day. So they had lots of time and we went through their whole class and we talked math and we talked reading. And a big piece of that reading was, okay, so these students, you know, what they need is that Orton Gillingham. But these students that are left in your room, here's the things that they need in small groups. So it was, it was to reach, like you said, everybody, not just our kids who may be struggling. So that was what was nice about digging into that data too, was looking at all of our students.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
So what type of support are we providing for those third graders who were passed on who didn't need their reading here?
That's a good question.
Is it the change in other session?
Yeah, so a couple things. One, we were actually able to, with our, the resources that we already had, provide some Orton Gillingham for some of those kids that, because decoding was the reason, right, ninety-four percent of the time. So we were super excited to be able to move that to fourth grade and not, and rethink the way we're giving services. Not like this is the kindergarten reading teacher and this is the first, but these are the kids that need it and so how can we make sure we give it to them? And then the second way is, like I was saying with the data meetings, we also met with fourth and fifth grade teachers. So when we were looking at ELA data for the math reading, right, for fourth grade teachers, if students weren't being pulled for Orton Gillingham or something, then we were able to look at, okay, where are they struggling? And here's some things you could do, whether it's small to slow. You know, so trying to help support them with exactly what the deficit is and here's some like instructional practices that will help them in a small group. So we're not perfect yet, but we're, we're working in that direction to make sure that we don't just stop in third grade and say, you're fine now, you know, but we keep making sure students are getting what they need. Anything else? All right.
Thank you. All right. Last component is graduation, okay, the final goal, right? Graduation, so that's the last component. And as you can see, most of the schools within our district fall within the four star or five star rating as far as graduation is concerned. We obviously were five stars. So this is, this is typically a component that doesn't change too awful much, okay? We kind of stay within that same area, most schools stay within that same area. But this does include the four-year graduation rate, which is the typical student who graduates in four years. We were at a ninety-eight point six percent. And then the five-year graduation rate, which is a ninety-eight or point three percent. The five year includes students, maybe with special needs or credit deficient students. Also, you can look here at the graph in comparison. So our district is blue, okay? Similar districts are in the black. And then the state is green. So you can tell we're significantly, our graduation rate is significantly higher than the state. Okay? And last but not least, college career workforce and military readiness. This component is not added into our report card, however, it will be in 2024, 25, okay? But they still go ahead and give us some important data. And this is the component that tells how ready, future-ready our students are for the workforce, for post-secondary education, for the military, okay? You can kind of see how it breaks it down. ACT participation, obviously we have a very high rate there because we have a whole-grade test as far as the ACT is concerned. Okay, SAT participation and remediation free, in this area, with the United States, SAT is not widely accepted. With colleges, we don't have a whole lot of students that take that. Honors diploma, industry-recognized credentials, which are being aligned with our Career Center. Advanced placement, participation, AP exam scores of three or better, okay? And then dual enrollment credits, so that would be our CCP, okay? The one thing is, we are going to need to check out, because we did find some discrepancies. There's one here that says military enlistment and last year, I believe it was Ms. Cook that said, she did go to the military signing of ceremony that they had. And so they have us at zero, but how many would you say were probably, let's say at least 10 to 12? So yeah, so we do need to check that out with the state and see exactly where they're getting these numbers from and investigate that a little bit to make sure that it's accurate. I'm going to go ahead and.
Great, your question.
Yes.
Mentioned the Career Center. And I had the question on the graduation rate. For our students that are 100% at the Career Center and not half-day, are they also included in this or are they only in our Career Center data?
They're in this because they are still, they're still our students. They still receive this program as a student.
Okay. So they're in both report cards, basically? So we got the same thing with that one? Okay. Thank you.
All right. This is the last chunk of data. These are the last numbers you have to look at. I'm really very happy about that. The state puts together a list for every district of similar districts. These similar districts are made up of districts that have similar demographics, similar incomes, similar makeup of the student body. So what I've done is I've created a chart, I've created a chart here that has, that has the performance index of all of these districts, the amount of spending per pupil of all of the districts, and the amount of stars that each district has received. I have a place, bring her down here, highlighted, to set us off from the rest. They're also down there because we are the lowest in spending and this is sorted by that. So you can see that the amount per pupil expenditure starts at the top with Chagrin at 15,686 and, and the bottom line shows us at 8,907. The overall averages, I averaged the stars, I averaged the amount per pupil and I averaged the performance index. The overall amount per pupil expenditure is 12,141.95 or roughly 3,235 less per pupil than what we spend. So we're doing amazing with what we have. We're doing an absolutely outstanding job with what we have. In fact, the average number of stars of our similar districts is lower than what, what we are. I want to show you this chart here with the dots. So you can see along the left side is the performance index, along the bottom is the spending per pupil. So if you look at this chart, you can kind of identify that there's, there's a trajectory here that shows the highest, the highest dots here are those who are spending the most money per pupil. So what we're seeing happening here is we look at this chart with similar districts in past years and we look at this chart with similar districts this year, is we're creating a gap as our spending is not going up. We're moving down here in performance index while the other districts that are spending more, their expenditure per pupil is going up, their scores are going up with it, scores being the performance index here. So this gap seems to be widening as the years go on. So we took historical data and I would not bore you tonight with the 2018, 19 and then the 2017, 18, we could put those up for you, but what you'll see is this red dot is us and we're creating a larger gap as those districts are increasing their spending and ours is staying somewhat stagnant. So I think this is probably a good lead-in to Mrs. Stacy's five-year forecast and the expenditures that she's going to go over next. But are there any questions as to where these similar districts are coming from? You can see a lot of them are north of Columbus. We do see that Beaver Creek is down here, Bell Brook Sugar Creek, Kings is within our group, Forest Hills, local Loveland. So some of those districts that I mentioned when I was talking about the 25 stars or 24 stars are existing here with us. You've got Oakwood up here at 106.8 with 12,539. So they're even more than the average of the group. So a great group of districts to be compared with. We're very proud to be in that group, but we're doing an outstanding job despite this 98.1 with what we've got. And we're really proud of our teachers, we're proud of our community that we're able to support the academics that are happening within our district and, and the absolute growth that we're seeing here as well.
It's always eye-opening to see that, that chart, 75% of just the average spending, which is just eye-opening to sort of see what our teachers and instructors are able to achieve, given where we fall on that chart. It's always eye-opening to see how big of a discrepancy there is among these parents.
A chunk 100%.
Yep. Not necessarily to compare with that.
No. I mean, it is amazing what we're doing with that, but you think about, even if it was 1,000 or 2,000 or what, you know, when you see these gaps, you think what could be done? You know, there was that graphic from like 2014 or something, where the pencil graphic, and we were that shortest pencil and we need to not always be that shortest pencil because we're doing amazing things, but what could it be if we invested a little bit more per student, so? Thank you.
Okay. Any questions overall on the district report card? We haven't overwhelmed you with too much in the way of data.
This is, you've done a great job of simplifying a really complicated formula here, so I appreciate that.
We will do.
100%. Thank you. I guess one just sort of observation, because Ms. Cook had said, I'd like to hear that we're not just holding ourselves to the state's definition of success, but it's not always necessarily the best measure. And so I appreciate hearing that we're striving for, I would say, well above what the state would consider sort of acceptable. Speaking of our support and our community, when, you know, that is also their objective, not just sort of meet those bare minimum state requirements, but, so I'm glad to hear that that's the team's focus.
I do have one more question. I couldn't find it summarized and I might just have not gone through the report card enough, but, you know, we, there's been a lot of studies on our children of color and especially our black boys and what, how they're story. And I know we don't have enough in some of the categories to see that. Have you been able to dig into that at all and are we making any steps in the right direction? And what specifically are we doing to support teachers in that area?
That's a good question. And I had a teacher today that was asking me about his value-added school, he's a high school teacher, and how he compared with the other people within his department. So what I did, and he'll, he'll have a meeting with us, we'll just sit down and do one-on-ones on value-added with all of our teachers. But what I did for him is, and what I do with all of our teachers when we sit down, is we break down their value-add, the growth scores for the students. We break down by gender, we break down by minority status, so that they can actually see on paper with the charts, how am I doing with my males versus my females? How am I doing with my majority Caucasian white here and my minority students? So we have the ability to isolate all of the subgroup data within the teacher's value-added. So that comes in handy with us and then when we go out to do those one-on-ones, which we will not be doing till after teacher conferences, because right now they're in map data world and we don't, we don't want to cloud that until after parent teacher conferences with value-added data. Some of the teachers are already looking at that, but we are able to isolate those students within a teacher's scores. And we do that for them, when we need. And then what, what we'll find out is, you know, I'll have a teacher say to me, oh my gosh, I really would have guessed that I did better with boys than I do with girls. I can't believe this, this is shocking to me. And then, then we can open up some of those conversations or with a certain minority status of a student, a certain race. So we're able to break that down almost by the student.
Are there supports, like, if there is a teacher that you're seeing is struggling significantly, you know, like that's where they're seeing a gap, they came in here and they're actually here, that there's some consistency with that? Like, what type of supports would we be offering for them?
We typically look to our ESCs on that and our ESCs do a great job with offerings on that. Now that the value-added data is available to us, you're going to start seeing more offerings at the ESCs. So they'll, they'll use the state data and then they'll offer programs that relate to, to the particular areas.
So we would send like the teachers that we know that's a corrupt area, maybe have us up to the date and we tell them, okay, that's great to know. Thank you.
We also work really closely, our team does, with the Hamilton County Instructional Council and they're really good about taking our advice when we say, hey, we need, in the case of the report card, hey, this report card, we need, we need a session on. So the last time we were down there, luckily they had a session for us. When we go down next for the November meeting, they'll have a big session on the value-added data. And that's the one that we'll be pretty familiar with, because we've used it for so many years. But on that note, we'll say, hey, what are you going to be offering with regards to subgroups? So Hamilton County is top notch with their data. Thanks. Any other questions? All right now. Are you the number four? Is anybody the number four? Did anybody change?
Yeah, I like the eight, thank you. I was going to say, I may have, I'm done. I still have three because I'm amazed really at what everybody's done. I mean, really, that's when you look at how much 8,000 something we're spending per and to see in so many different areas, the strike, I mean, when the report card came out, I just was blown away by what has been done. And we're also transitioning back into somewhat normal, so this was not a fully, you know, normal year last year. So I stick, I sticked on a three, I'm shocked it at all. And I reviewed it quite a bit.
All right, thank you. Thanks everybody for your attention.
Thank you.
Scott, do you mind if we take a?
No, do it. I'd agree.
Okay. Yeah.
This two won't be on for T2 on.
All right. Push record. Mr. President and members of the board, we're bringing before you this evening an opportunity for us to continue our asphalt or hardscape improvement within the district. When I came on board a year ago, we started evaluating our facilities, both interiorly and exteriorly. Certainly this 40 acres of hardscape we have, which is concrete and asphalt sidewalks, parking lots, things of that nature, certainly needed to be addressed. And so we started prioritizing those. We addressed a lot of those issues this summer with doing the high school and Dennis Elementary, which were high priorities. And our next priority is certainly Five Points Elementary. We're having some serious issues out there with asphalt deteriorating pretty quickly. And we did do a cap on it back in 2021 when I arrived, some concrete, or pardon me, some asphalt seal coating and crack sealing, just expanded a little bit to give us a little more time. And so we're now at that time. So we just wanted to make sure we brought that to your attention this evening and, you know, we have a resolution at the end of the board's meeting. So any questions that you may have on that?
I asked about Dennis, but we did it this summer.
Yes, we did it this summer. Yeah, and we'll do the same kind of thing we did at Dennis, yeah, at Five Points. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're off the roof, pretty good. Well, there's probably good, good things about tonight. Obviously money isn't as fun, but more exciting as the report card piece. Probably be able to like, never to work if I get too far away. The good news is, is there's not a lot that's changed since May. The bad news is 27 has not been on our forecast and we can see that we're looking even worse than the trajectory that we are in going in, in before 27 came on. I'm not going to spend a ton of time going into individual items because not a lot has changed. And we're also going to be having some future conversations after the first of the year that we'll be able to dive into this stuff a little bit more. One of the things I really do want to hit on, and I hope everybody has a copy, they were up here, just because it might be a little bit hard to see, is our deficit spending. So I think a lot of times people go instantly to the cash balance each year and go, okay, well, we look okay, we have money, we're above our 10% of yearly expenditures, so we're good, right? Well, we're not. We're not good, especially in the later years of our forecast. So, you know, I was trying to find an easy way and I kind of ran it by our cabinet earlier today to make sure that it was easy enough to understand so I, so I could kind of share it with you guys tonight. So what we're going to do on this chart, so that you can understand what our deficit spending means, is we're going to talk about our revenue as income. So if we're at home, this is how much money I make a year. I wish that was how much I made a year, but we're going to say this is our income that we make. And then our expenses are going to be all of our bills that we have at home. And our cash balance at the end of the year is going to be our savings account. So that's how much money we have in savings at the bottom of the year, at the bottom of the forecast year, for our cash balance. So if, we'll just go 23 because this is the only one that actually looks really good, is we have, are expecting to have $62 million in income this year. So we're going to make 62 million this year. We're only going to spend 60 million this year, which means when you see this revenue surplus or deficit, if the number is in black, that means we're going to be depositing money at the end of the year into our savings account. So this year, we're, we're expecting to deposit 1.8 million dollars into our savings account. If you follow that same pathology through the whole entire forecast, you can see, once we get to especially 2025, our income that we're supposed to be expecting to make is only going to be 64 million, but our expenditures, our bills, are going to be 65 and a half million. So we're going to have to deduct, well, almost 1.4 million dollars that year alone out of our savings account. So obviously, just like at home, if you have to take money out of your savings account each year just to make ends meet, eventually your savings account is going to be zero. So when, when that happens, obviously you don't have any money to pay your bills and then you're not going to be able to pay your expenditures. I think the important piece to see when you are just looking at it as a whole, instead of looking at our savings account balances, look how much our deficit spending or how much we're having to take out of our savings account each year to make ends meet, how much it's growing. So it's almost 1.4 million in '25 and it goes to almost 2.3 and then it goes to almost 4.2 million. And that's just with what we know today. And, you know, we'll talk about this a little bit, just going through some of these slides quickly, but we hear, like we did tonight, about our report card and we hear about the things that we're going to need in order, and what would, what would we like our school district to look like? You know, make him, as soon as that comes out of my call, it's amazing, wow, where are you going to put them? But then, that's expensive, it's not a cheap thing. So when we are talking about, you know, those kind of things, I look at, well, this is where we're at today with what we have today and it's not looking super, so it just starts that conversation of, you know, what, what are we going to look like in our future? A quick breakdown of our revenue, just so you guys can understand where our revenue is coming from, about 53% is coming from real estate, so that's from our taxpayers, whether it's our commercial taxpayers, our businesses, or agriculture taxpayers, or homeowners. That's where that, that revenue is coming from. 11% is our public utility, so those are our pipelines and then our actual public utility companies like Duke Energy. That's 11% of our revenue. 33% of our revenue is coming from state funds. So that also includes rollback at Homestead, which are the. So that also includes rollback and homestead, which are the credits that the state picks up for taxpayers who had levies passed prior to, I would say, two thousand twelve or something, two thousand thirteen. So they pick up some of those rollback and homestead credits that could right now homeowners get off their tax bills. And then we have about three percent as miscellaneous revenue, which is anything from school fees, pay to participate fees, interest, things like that. So there, when I said there wasn't many changes from May till November, I highlighted just what the expense, expenditure changes are revenues, sorry, run revenues or revenues should just work. So there'll be a slight change in revenue here for twenty three through twenty six from May till now. The majority of that is because I have put in preliminary twenty twenty two, new construction estimates that we got from county auditor about two weeks ago. It was slightly higher than what I anticipated. Usually when you come up a triennial update, usually sometimes the values go down a little bit or they're pretty flat because they've gotten things pretty close. But the new construction estimates were a little bit higher, so I did add that. Added almost one point seven million in new value, but that's not a lot of money. We're talking about forty five thousand in revenue, but it is almost one point seven million. The reason why it's higher, especially starting here in twenty twenty three, just for this year, is because we did receive delinquent tax payments. So that's when the county auditor goes out and tries to collect taxes for people who haven't paid them and they're late. I only had about three hundred and fifty thousand anticipated to collect this year, which is our typical. They collected almost seven hundred and forty thousand. So that's where you'll see the additional based off of, above my estimate. And then what I did in turn is I took a three year average and I kind of bumped up my trend on collections from the delinquents, which is why we have a little bit of additional revenue too in each of those years. Really the only other change here is our state funding. They've kind of changed the way from House Bill one to current law. They've made some what used to be unrestricted, which means you could spend it on anything you wanted. They've made some of those funds restricted, like gifted is now restricted, DPIA is restricted. So they've made some of these items restricted. So I just kind of moved them from where they were to where they are now. And then another piece for the state funding formula that's important is, is they, they give, they, the cost follows the student. So if we have students that leave and go on autism scholarships or community schools, those are no longer revenue that we're receiving and the expenditures are coming out on the purchase services side. They just take it out altogether. So as those enrollments change, I do have to fluctuate the revenue in the, in the forecast because it's revenue we will not receive or additional revenue we will receive. You'll see a little bit of changes have been ever that's super. Mainly it was just because of the restricted to unrestricted piece of where the actual revenue is falling. So at the bottom line, you can kind of see where other than this year of the three hundred twenty eight thousand, we're looking at around the thirty thousand dollar change from May till November. So virtually no change in our revenue. It's within, this first year here, this was within a half a percent of estimates, but the rest of the building and registers and this and that. This is just a sheet that I've put on here for you guys to be able to see if you are interested in it. This is our largest category, which is class one, which is our residential. And this will just kind of show you here over here, especially the triennial updates, the different amounts that I have in expecting for our revenues to increase. The reason why I put this on here is because there is a possibility, which we don't have any way of knowing at this early stage, that in twenty twenty four, that's our next triennial update. I currently have a six percent increase in real estate for class one for, for the next triennial update. You can see our last one was seventeen point one in class one and before that it was fifteen and a half. I talked to the county auditor just to make sure that I, my estimates are, you know, not, obviously they're not going to be aggressive, but that they weren't too conservative. And he said, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put her above six, just with the way everything is going economy right now. And at some point it might taper off. So there could be additional revenue if it comes in at higher than six percent that we have no way of knowing. And I don't want you guys to make future plans on letting it, I'm not sure if you can get. It won't be breaking on the state funding too much. I've worked on a piece of this. This is just kind of some of the language changes and I've talked about this pretty extensively in the, if you guys were at my main forecast, I talked about it extensively, but I always like to hit on it just, you know, quickly, but it's just basically the new base cost mythology and the way schools are funded. The one I want to show you on this one, if we're going to talk about any of it, is this whole thought about who pays. So this is kind of a scary piece when we're looking at our revenue, because every two years the state passes a biennial budget. And so right now in our current forecast, I have us pretty flatlined all the way across, that they're going to continue funding this formula as they have promised. That doesn't really mean a whole lot because they could come through, through legislation of the next biennial and say, um, we can't afford to pay, you know, our state's doing worse and we can't afford to give you what we're going to do for. It's possible, but what would that mean to us? So right now they look at each school district separately. So every school district is going to have a separate base cost and they say, what is the cost to educate a kid today in Springfield? And they do the same thing for every other school district in the state. They're telling us that it costs seven thousand two seventy five. That's the base cost. That's the minimum, the, the bottom of the barrel that you should do. There's a lot of things above and beyond that state, kind of like also like the great country, they say, this is the state minimum, you know, you should explore above this. Well, it's the same with this cost. There's a lot more cost that you should spend, but this is the absolute minimum of what you should spend. And then they decide how much of that should be on the district to provide, which would be the local taxpayers, and then how much of that they believe the state should pick up. Well, they believe that the state should only pick up six hundred and sixty nine dollars a kid for us and that we as the community, the taxpayers in the community should pick up the other six thousand six hundred and six dollars per kid. So that's roughly ninety one percent that our local taxpayers should pick up and then the other ninety percent. The reason why that's important is because when they pass this funding formula, they said, okay, we're going to guarantee that you will not receive less money than you did in twenty twenty. So obviously in twenty twenty and then they, then the second year of the biennial, which is where we're in right now, you won't get less than you did in twenty twenty one. So that means that because of that, we're about eight million dollars short. So I see that's on the second chart that's in the top here. Right here, when you look at, they believe they should come up with four million three hundred and eighty nine thousand total. And then this is what we received in twenty twenty one, which is twelve point nine hundred and seventy seven thousand. So we're about eight million five hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars short. So they put a guarantee in place that said, well, we're going to give you that because we promised you, you won't make, you won't bring in less than you did in twenty twenty one. So they gave us that. In addition, there's a transitional aid guarantee, which gives you additional funding, but they also guaranteed in the current funding formula, which is another two point eight million dollars. So basically this current funding formula, it's giving us ten million dollars this year and it slightly goes down a little bit each year. Those are the amounts that I have in the forecast, I have in the forecast that we're going to continue to receive while we're receiving in twenty twenty one each year. And for some reason in the next biennial, they were deciding to go away from this and to say, yeah, we can't do that ten million anymore. That could be a big problem because that's a lot of money. I think the bottom one, you know, the ten point one million, the only thing that I see coming off of that one possibly be if they were to lower the transitional aid guarantee, which is that second piece that they pick up. I don't see how we're going to go away from this eight point five, almost eight point nine million in guarantees, just because that is already a law. They're saying that it's going to be thirty three percent every biennial, any school we face it in six years. So this will be a piece that I'll be really watching because we might have some advocacy pieces to do if it looks like they're going to go in a different direction because that would pretty much be catastrophic for us if anything like that were to ever happen. And I can't see the state, they have to have other districts that are in the same mode as us that are heavily guaranteed right now. So we could get hundreds of additional students and we're not really going to get any additional money because we're so far guaranteed to receive what we're receiving. Our expenditure summary, this one looks even, um, even better, I should say, in terms of our expenses. This was the total change through our forecast from May till November. I added fifty thousand dollars a year starting in twenty twenty four. The rest of it's just pretty much rounding. The reason why I added fifty thousand is because I have a feeling that our insurance will probably go up, um, you know, for appropriate league insurance, it's going to go up, I would say probably this time next year. I've also added, and you'll see this on the back page of the forecast, I've also added potential D fund, but I put fifty thousand dollars in it per year as a reservation, just for some contingency that we will have. I believe I talked, we talked about that previously before. Some of the key things that just been looking at our current forecast that are, had a note, I say these pretty much each time, but our negotiated agreements that we currently have in place, they are going through June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. So depending on how that goes, there could be additional expenditures that are not accounted for in here, which would make those deficit spends, so the amounts we're dipping into our savings account, that would make that melt higher. We are anticipating ten percent a year for health insurance increases. This year we were lucky enough to only get seven and we are moving in the right, in the right direction. I think our loss ratio last month was ninety five percent. So it's the, probably the first time I've seen it under a hundred since I've been here. And then also we've had a lot of one type S R funds and we'll talk about that here in a second, which is important to consider as well. Cast the PI levy, which was wonderful as an increase in taxes in May, that has actually helped us by our current savings account balances by six point seven, almost six point eight million by leaving some expenses out of the general fund to where they should be charged, which would be our permanent group of funds. So that was being able to get us through to where we are today. This is just another quick way to show you the same thing that I showed you before. It just shows you the, our deficit spend. So these are the amounts that we have to dip into our savings account each year to cover until eventually we won't have any. But to give you an understanding of this, this right here is about two point one six percent our total revenue, down here three point four eight and then six point three one in the end. So what that means is, is we would have to either decrease our expenditures by six point three one percent this year, or we have to increase our revenue by six point three one percent in order to not be deficit spending and not have to dip into our savings account at that year. So it grows each year, which is something that happens. This is a chart that you'll see on ODD and lots of districts. We talk about this chart as they're looking at their cash balances. And if you're in the green, you're good. Once you hit yellow, it's technically, don't get freaked out, it's technically fiscal caution. Then it goes to warning and then it goes to emergency. They don't deem you in fiscal caution or fiscal emergency unless you're, that number is the current year or the upcoming previous year. So we're over here, so we're in the green. We wouldn't even be close to even having to look at that until twenty five in terms of just looking at where we're at to go in towards fiscal caution. But if you have a plan in place, when you submit your forecast, even if you're in one of these, they won't necessarily deem you that because you're not in place of what you're going to do in one of the year. So just because it looks like that doesn't mean automatically doesn't mean that. This kind of is something that Andrea and I have been on. There's been a lot of things that we've been able to add because of S R and these one time funds that we have. And one of, some of the main ones are the pre-greedy intervention teachers, one at Pier three, one at Five Points, and one in there is something you've been able to hire because of these one time funds. And I know when I talked about earlier literacy and they're talking about the gap closing, these right now are not in our forecast. So after twenty four, starting in fiscal twenty five, those are not in our forecast. So if that's a huge push and a need, then that's something that would have to be recommended in order to be added to the forecast. That's about a hundred and eighty thousand, which is a thousand people alone. And then you could also see some of these other items that we're paying with one time S R funds. It's about seven hundred and fifty thousand for one year. We wanted to add all of these back into our forecast starting in twenty twenty five. Currently they're all being paid for through S R through twenty twenty four. So fiscal twenty five is when they are not here in longer. Some other challenges, we obviously want to talk about pipeline every time we can. I'm hoping that I'm going to be doing a track and lasmo in the spring. I submitted to speak with a panel of five other people and I'm really hoping that we'll be able to get some movement from treasurers around the state who are facing the same issues and, I mean, staying with pipeline appeals. Rover Nexus currently have been going on, so we're watching that to kind of see what is decided on those, to see if that might help in a direction. Because I've had to remove five hundred and twenty four thousand from our general from five hundred and eighty four thousand total between the PI general and the bomb annually just since March when we learned about this. So obviously if something happens with that appeal and we somehow get additional revenue back, that would be wonderful. But I think it's going to be important for us to make sure that we're advocating for that appeal to be denied, even though we don't have any say, but maybe a bit of pressure will help, help the situation. Again, we'll begin negotiations probably January, February is timeframe in twenty twenty four for beginning for fiscal twenty five. And so again, anything that is above or beyond of our forecast right now would change those cash balances. Again, we have our deficit spending, you know, each four of the five years of the forecast and we'll talk about that. Obviously unexpected items that are not in the forecast could also reduce our cash balances and then any state money changes are always a worry, but that could change where we're at by the end of the year. This is the, I put it in mind too, because when we talked about it again, I did this before, just kind of piggyback off of what Andrea had mentioned when she talked about this slide. When you see here, we spent almost seventy two percent of our total spending per kid. So per child, we spent almost seventy two percent in, in the destruction, which is amazing. When you look at the Lake District and the similar districts that they compare us to, we're fifteenth of forty four. So we're spending more than, we're spending more in construction than sixty six percent of the people in our similar group area. Another thing too, you know, we've talked about how we're doing in the state. We have lots of charts. So to give you an, I'll, I'll get that in the next slide real quick, I won't say that one yet. But you can see again with the red dot where we are, this way is spending, this way is performance. So when you're looking, of course, we're over here by ourselves, we will always spend. And then we're also starting to fall behind, like she mentioned, when you put the year over year data, and I have that too, when you put the year over year data, the more districts are pulling away and their spend, if their, their spend goes up, ours is only about nine hundred dollars higher than it was last year. Most districts are up by almost two thousand at least for kids. So we're doing less than half when we're talking about increasing year over year enrollment districts. The reason I wanted to say that point for this slide was because when you're really looking at our data, this is what we spend and this is what the average district spends. So we spend two thousand three thirty nine less per child than the state average. And if you go for three thousand, I think three thousand and three dollars less per district that are like Springfield. So you look at this and you say, we're spending that much less per child, which if you multiply that by the number of children we have, that's fourteen point two, almost fourteen point three million dollars in less per year than the average. And to give a number out, that's about nine, nine to eleven, just so you understand without the twenty two. You look over here and you say, we are the fifteenth highest, I know it's a small chart, but we're the fifteenth highest median income in the entire state of Ohio. We're six hundred and seventy school districts. We have the fifteenth highest median income and we are six hundred and one of six hundred and seventy spending. So there's only six school districts in the entire state that spend less than us per kid. But we're the fifteenth highest in our, in our income that we have here. So it's just something we need to have. And to get a lot less federal aid because our poverty is so low, we're only getting about four hundred and twenty dollars a child versus fourteen hundred and sixty six is the state average of federal funds. So this is something important to know. When you see that we're in the top, you know, in median income and there's only six districts that spend less than three percent about. And here's a five year forecast that you can see again, our cash balance is a little decent for the next few years. I have the ability to have two additional years on our forecast and I'll share it with you guys on, in January timeframe. But twenty eight, twenty nine, it's upwards of ten million in the hole by twenty nine. If we do nothing else at all, not add anything and don't get any new revenue, it's upwards of ten million dollars by twenty nine, if everything else is in the hole in our cash balance or our savings account balance. So definitely not as promising as what your forecast presentation, but it's where we are.
Tara?
Yes.
Looks like the East of properties moving forward.
Looks like the Easton property is moving forward, right? Of course, they probably have a lot of abatements or stuff going on.
I saw some formulary things from them about abatements. But typically, they've been very good to hold us harmless, and I think that we'll be probably talking about that in January too. I think that they'll be coming to the meeting in January to talk about that. But they've been usually typically good about holding the school district harmless. So making up, kind of like our funnel tip, you know, making up for any amounts of the school district would normally generate, making us whole for those. They've usually been pretty good. I'm not sure in this case, it hasn't gotten that far along, but that would be the case, especially when we can get additional students from that. And that's another piece that we're going to have to really start talking about too. And, you know, we already know that, you know, it's just our enrollment, you know, what we've got, our buildings, capacity, everything. So those will be more conversations that we can couple with this after the first year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got one. Yeah, it's just, we had our safety committee on October the 5th. It was a really positive meeting, I think, and we had a very diverse group of community residents and building administrators and board members and SROs and mental health that were participating in that. And it was, I think, a good roundtable and opportunity for us to learn from each other. And, you know, one of the things that certainly we learned is that, you know, safety and security is very fluid. There's a lot of things going on. Unfortunately, you know, we were talking about the Uvalde incident, now we've got the St. Louis incident. So it's continuing out there. And our district does a tremendous job, really, with regards to safety and security. One of the things we are going to do as well as a team is we're going to go out and start observing more of the drills and things that are being performed within the buildings so that we can all meet together and talk about after-action items and things that might be needed to improve upon what we're currently doing. The other thing is, is that, you know, we are still working on, and most districts will tell you this, that subs are very challenging with regards to getting them trained. We did, at our last DLT meeting, bring in the high school plan that they have, and the elementaries and the junior high and SI all looked at those plans, and they're starting to incorporate a more intensive sheet for those who come into sub, within the sub-packets. The other thing we're doing is looking at training with regards to public school works, who performs our formal training for our staff, and incorporating our run-high fight within that, and also making sure that we do that, maybe when a sub comes in, giving them some time in order to review that information. So we're working on those things and continually trying to improve upon what we're doing. So overall, very positive meeting, and we do a pretty good job here, I think. So any questions from anyone? Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other business? Tara? And Jan?
My first item is 4.1 approval of the September financials. Just to, they're obviously on Word docs for you to review, just a couple of highlights from those. We did receive just over $5.5 million in the month of September in revenue. Of that, $596,000 was due to our real estate tax settlement from Warren County. So obviously, here when I talk about settlements coming in, that means we have no more taxes rolling in for real estate until February timeframe. So you'll definitely start to see our cash balances go down from that. So all of it looks healthy right now just because we're going to be dealing into that as our revenue declines. So $596,000 was due to our real estate settlement. 3.3 was for our public utility revenue for this half. Again, we won't receive any of that until March, April timeframe again. 1.2 million in state funding, which stays pretty similar each month throughout the year. And then 359,000 was for other operating revenues such as school fees, funnel help tips, and tax abatements. For expenditures, it was just over $5 million for the month. All expenditures in every category are running at lower estimates. So that's good through September. Our cash balance at the end of September was just over $20.1 million. This about $165,000 a day for us to operate on average, which puts us at about 122 days of operating cash on hand. And I am anticipating that to be in five days when we close the fiscal year. So the balance is going to come back down a little bit before we close the fiscal year. So those are just the highlights from September. Any questions? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what I asked you. Item 4.2 approval of donation of $500 from the Leek and their football club to be used towards the Rats program, and we'll go on this to separate.
Is there a motion? Some moved.
Second. What is, I'm just curious, what, that's an interesting donation to me that people are donating to Jared Ratsy. Do you know, is there a, like, what, how that, how's that connection made? Anybody have any idea?
Usually sending access from the bottom of your own agenda.
Okay, that's fine. I just, when I was looking before I came, I thought, I wonder, that's an unusual connection, but really cool.
Yeah, I can.
Don't worry about it. Thanks.
Okay, so item 4.3, so 4.4, I sent you guys.
We did decorate it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need motion.
Second.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I have Jade and Lisa. Okay, so Bath?
Yes.
Dookie?
Abstain.
Balajay?
Yes.
Yes.
Benner, done there.
Okay, so item 4.4 is approval of Purple Star Club. And I did mention to you, and I did put notes in on that, for that, Purple Star Club is looking to do some annual fundraising. I guess in the past, the Warner Brothers have been throwing all this stuff out of their pocket. So they said, is there a way that we can do fundraising and have the money kind of get it out of the school? And I said, absolutely, it just has to be something the board has to approve first. So they're looking at doing some more things for Military Signing Day. They give gift bags, they host a reception. They want to purchase additional spiritware for incoming students from military families. They also are the ones that purchased out of their own pocket in the past, the course for those who are going to the military at graduation. So they're, so they're doing amazing things, and they just want to be able to actually do fundraisers for that. So that's what the Purple Star Club is.
Do I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Who, is that a community member based or teacher, or who makes up that club?
She does work here. She is considered a Purple Star. She's our study hall monitor, and she's a military family meeting club. So she's going to kind of coordinate everything, but does actually rest in these buildings, and she's just going to help coordinate the whole thing.
That's amazing.
And then the second club will be the Minority Student Union, has requested to fundraise as well. And they're going to be offering scholarships to students graduating from our high school as well as donating to different organizations dedicated to community service. So they would also like to have a club set up. And then the rest of my items, I'll go through pretty quickly, which are just donations. Approval of donation of $25 from Michael and Jeanne Pike to student yield balances fund. 4.7 approval of donation of $116 from Kona Island High School Student Council. Item 4.8 approval of donation of $24 from Lopel Suave, sorry, I spelled that wrong, to the student yield balance account. And then 4.9 is approval of donation, creative memory art supplies estimated at $1,000 from Pat Couch for the junior high art department. And then there's a list of supplies attached for that, that we're going to be reviewing.
Okay. Motion to accept 4.4 and 4.8. Second.
So I have one question. The minority union, is that junior high and high school or just high school?
It is, let's see. Is that high school? Yes, that's a just.
So would the, if the junior high wanted to do that, would that need to be a separate thing we voted on? Or could they be under that umbrella?
I mean, it's the minority student, we all set it up at the high school, but if the junior high wants to, then we're just approving the student union.
The union, okay.
So there's more buildings that want to, kind of like how we're doing it with the Purple Star one, approving it at the club, and then we have different codes under that lottery.
Okay, thank you.
So, Bath?
Yes.
Dookie?
Yes.
Balajay?
Yes.
Shal, Shalani Hall?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Board President. I'm here to report. I've come before you and asked for approval for a contract with Focus 3. And now at the last work session, we got some additional information, and we were able to answer questions, as well as an additional for up to $5,000 for miscellaneous expenses that are not in the contract. Questions about 5.1?
Do you anticipate any changes to the amount, the quoted amount? Prices are going to go up or anything?
That won't, and that's why we asked for the additional money, because they can't anticipate some of the travel and lodging costs. And then as we look at who is going to be a part of the team, sometimes there's additional costs in terms of workbooks or the disc profiler and other things like that. So once that stuff gets flushed out, that's why we wanted the additional money that we had allocated through Esser to pay for that. All right, 5.2 is approval of the personnel report. And just a couple to call out really quick. Three retirees, all from Dennis Elementary. Carrie Rourke, who's a second grade teacher. She is going to retire at the end of the school year, and she has 33 years. I'm a member of us, and very proud of her. Kathy Allen, who's assistant cook, has been with us since 2006. She's been with us for 16 years. And if you've been to Dennis Elementary, as I know some of you have, Melissa Loosier, who's the building secretary, who's been there for about 23 years, is going to retire as well.
All right, is there a motion to accept? Some moved.
Second, Lisa.
Lisa. Any questions? Roll call.
Bath?
Yes.
Dookie?
Yes.
Balajay?
Yes.
Shalani Hall?
Yes.
There'll be bottom 5.4, the approval of the athletic report. And these are approvals that we're bringing to you there for the upcoming winter sports season.
Is there a motion to accept 5.4? Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Bath?
Yes.
Dookie?
Abstain.
Balajay?
Yes.
Shalani Hall?
Yes.
All right. We come to you this evening with item 6.1, which is approval for main campus directional signage. That's something I worked with Scott Marshall on, we worked with Austin on as well. We just felt that we needed to improve our signage on the campus to give us better direction as to where buildings were and identification. So we're looking to get that accomplished. Approval of two special needs buses. That's part of our, you know, cycling that we do with school buses. We're in a need right now because of the current age and condition of a couple of buses. By the way, those buses are 270-plus days out for delivery. So we are still waiting on buses that we ordered last year. Been told we won't get them maybe until January of 2023 now. So it's just been a tremendous delay. And then item 6.3 is the approval for the 5 Points paving project with Prodigy. Any questions? Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve 6.1 through 6.3? Some moved.
Who's opposed to?
Is there a sound?
They said it's same.
Oh.
Bath?
Yes.
Dookie?
Yes.
Balajay?
Yes.
Shalani Hall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Sarah. 7.1 is approval of the student services private placement contract. But Sarah wanted me to let you know that because of some transitions, it's not going to be as big of increases as what you see here. A net of $6,800.
Okay, is there a motion to accept 7.1?
Some moved.
Second. Roll call.
Bath?
Yes.
Dookie?
Yes.
Balajay?
Yes.
Shalani Hall?
Yes.
Any announcements right now?
No.
Okay. Sarah? Comments?
I just, lots of information to take in tonight. Really, I always love when we see and hear what students are doing. I love the fact that you have the programs available to encourage students to go into a mission career. I also shout out to the junior highs, anybody who wants with the Washington DC trip, because I've been on those trips for, not per se, but our district, but there's a lot involved, and I really appreciate the time that we're given. And appreciated to the curriculum team, to going over our report card, you know, seeing the areas that we're doing really well and the areas that we know that we need to do better in.
First off, I want to thank Tara for, you always simplify a very, very difficult forecast to make it to where we understand it for the people that are not finance people. So thank you for that. But it's not great news with what we've had. So I think it's just the reality, you know, I like how you explain it with your expenditures revenue and what you put in the bank at the end, and that's a huge concern. So I appreciate you bringing it forth in that way. And we have a lot to discuss at our board retreat in January about that. The data team just did such a nice job today. You know, it's very easy when you take a district like ours and just focus on the positives, because there are so many positives. But I just appreciate that you looked into, we get it, there's some areas that we want to continue to grow on. And with that being said, holy cow, I mean, it was just so amazing with the positive, you know, how much growth, and this is, you know, I know they keep changing the way you do the report cards, so it's hard to compare apples with apples, you know, necessarily. But you look at this and you look at some other districts that, when you look at that whole, whatever that niche report or whatever that was, we're not as high there, but this thing right here tells you exactly, like, when you're looking at what it's doing for our state, our students, I, this is just so much to celebrate. So kudos to us with this, and I love how much we're using data to really drive what we're doing with our students. So congratulations on that. Is that ready?
Yeah, not much else to add, just thank you to everybody who presented. You guys did a great job with lots of complex information, and appreciate all the work that went into presenting it and, in case of the report card, the work that went into achieving, you know, those great results. So thank you very much. Yeah, I really enjoyed the presentation. It's great to hear about some of the things that our students have the opportunity to participate in. Thank you to everybody for all the presentations as well, and that was it.
Okay. Thanks to the ROTC presentation. My son went through four years of ROTC and enjoyed it tremendously. Thank you to the people that did the report card. You know, it's, it's good to see that we're doing so well, but they also recognize that there's areas of improvement. Thanks Tara for a shortened version of. You did well. You did well. Okay. Thanks for the donations, and then kind of a sports update. Now, maybe somebody can help me with it if I forget something. But obviously, football is in the first round of the playoffs this week at home against Oak Hills. Golf, both teams went to state, girls and guys. They didn't finish great, but I'm sure they had a great opportunity. And for both teams to go from the same school is very unusual. Doesn't happen very often, especially in D1. I saw that the soccer girls qualify or are going on to districts, I believe, so.
Correct.
They, I believe, play Saturday, maybe? I don't know about the boys. Is there any information about our boys soccer? Okay.
Yeah. They're still playing as well?
They're still, yeah. They're still playing, yeah. I can't either. Yeah, I can't either.
The districts also.
I think they got switched to play at Norwood or something. They were going to play at Princeton, now they're playing at Norwood, yeah. So, yeah.
It's God's comfort, God forsaken. And that's pretty much it, so.
Cross-country?
Oh, yeah.
Cross-country, yeah.
The one districts and then regionals are this week.
Okay. Forget girls tennis?
Good seasons, though, by everybody.
All right.
Can I say one more thing that I forgot? I just wanted to give a kudo to the Dennis, because Dennis was where all my boys went. And those, the people that he mentioned are just. And those, the people that he mentioned are just amazing, amazing people. And just to, they really, um, exemplify the heart of Dennis and all that they've given. So I just wanted to do a thank you to them also and for their major years of commitment through some tough times in Spur Borough and they stuck with it. So I regret to mention that, thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion that we need to move into executive session to, uh, for the purpose of the discipline of a public employee or official, is there a motion?
Some moves.
Second. Roll call.
Bath?
Yes.
Stuki?
Yes.
Balaj?
Yes.
Shalal?
Yes.